All right, good evening and welcome. My apologies, we're running a couple of minutes late. If you'll just bear with us a few moments, we'll get the meeting up and running. For those of you that are here for the first item on our agenda, and yes, my glasses are broken. I broke them in the meeting before this, so if they fall off and I look like an idiot, my apologies. Zoning request, Z19-003. We received an email right before the meeting that this item will be tabled to next month's planning and zoning meeting. So if you are here for that item, I don't want you to be disappointed, but we will be tabling that as a matter of our first order of business. So if you'll just bear with us, we'll get everything set up and running. Thanks. All right. First, I'd like to welcome everyone to the planning and zoning meeting for the city of Smyrna. Today is Monday, May 13th, 2019. It's 6:03 PM. This meeting's called to order. At this time, we'd like to ask that all electronic devices be turned off as they interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions from the board. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask that you come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, sign the sign-in sheet at the podium, and please address all your comments to the board. Okay. The first item on our agenda, as I said at the beginning, item 2019-90, this is zoning application, Z19-003, is to be tabled to... Does anybody have the meeting, June, the date?
June 10th.
June 10th. This meeting, this item is to be tabled to the June 10th meeting. Do I have a motion? A motion, Mr. Monroe, a second, Mr. Seagraves. Please vote. Who are we missing? Earl?
I hit it.
The item's tabled, 7-0. Okay. The next item on our agenda is item 2019-166. This is the approval of a subdivision plat for five lots with variances. It's 2.4 acres, land lot 384. This is 3813 North Cooper Lake Road. Charles Welch is the applicant. Mr. Martin, in the background, please.
This is a plat approval to subdivide an existing single-family lot into five new single-family lots at 3813 North Cooper Lake Road. The applicant is Charles Welch. You guys will hear tonight and make a recommendation to mayor and council, and they will make a final decision at, I'm sorry, that's the wrong hearing up there, at next week's meeting. The property is owned R15, as I stated. The existing site conditions has a single-family dwelling unit with an accessory dwelling unit in the back. The applicant is proposing to tear down the existing single-family lot, leave the accessory dwelling unit, and then subdivide the property into five lots. And I'll provide you the plat here in a minute to show you what that'll look like. The property's approximately 2.4 acres in size, and as I stated, there are no, this is not a zoning change, this is just a plat approval to subdivide the property, so it's going to maintain its R15 zoning classification. This is the proposed plat. The applicant is proposing four single-family homes that'll front on Austin Drive, and then one single-family home that'll front on North Cooper Lake Road, and that will have the accessory dwelling unit, which is located right there. With this development, it's going to maintain the R15 zoning standards, which is a front setback of 35 feet, a side setback of 10 feet, a street side, which is over there at the corner of North Cooper Lake and Austin, that street side along North Cooper Lake will be 23.3 feet, and a rear setback of 30 feet. And those are the standard requirements for the R15 lot. This property, as part of the plat, will be consolidated into 870 Austin Drive, which is the immediate property to the east. And this is the location of the 50-foot undisturbed stream buffer. You can see the stream sort of, the headwaters sort of start just off the property at the This is the detention facility and its location. As part of this plat approval, they are requesting a variance to allow for the encroachment of that detention facility into the 50-foot undisturbed stream buffer. However, they will stay outside of the 20-foot, 25-foot state buffer. This is a proposed sanitary sewer line for the development. 20-foot access easement to the detention facility. And as I stated before, they are requesting variance from the city's stream buffer ordinance to reduce that stream buffer from 50 feet to 25 feet for the detention facility. The city engineer's reviewed it, and he is okay with the proposed request, so he supports This is the picture of the subject property. The picture in the left, upper-left-hand corner is from Austin Drive. Upper right is from the intersection at Austin and North Cooper Lake. And then the lower picture is of the accessory dwelling unit in the back. These are adjacent properties. Community Development has reviewed the requests against R15 zoning standards. We are recommending approval of the requested plat with the requested variance for the stream buffer encroachment. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions for Mr. Martin? All right, thank you much. Good evening and welcome. Welcome back, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Good to be here. Thank you, and good evening. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of Charles Welch, applicant and owner. In this application for plat approval, it also includes a variance request, as Mr. Martin reviewed with you. Just to clarify, I understood there was also a variance to reduce that side setback for the accessory from 10 to 9 feet? And I just want to make sure that's before...
Yes, there's a side setback variance for the corner of that accessory structure.
Correct. Okay, just to make sure about that as well. So there's actually two variances that are being requested as part of this, one of which Mr. Martin reviewed with you. In order to construct the detention pond, which is on the screen that you're looking at, is on the bottom-left-hand corner, would be a reduction of only the city's stream buffer from 55, from 50 feet to 25 feet. As you can see where that stream starts just off the property there, that buffer encroaches into this property, which is a 2.4-acre tract. If you did not have, or the variance is not granted, what happens is that wall and construction of the detention pond would actually result in moving that, if you're looking at it on the screen, moving it to the right. And what would happen then is that existing, what's called an accessory structure, it's really a carriage house that's, will be used as a future residence, would have to be torn down as well, which is the, if the variance was not granted. So that's what we're dealing with here, is trying to save what's a very nice carriage house, where it will then be its own, its own lot, and a home, future home location. And that's how, and why this variance we're proposing, we think, really mitigates the effect of the variance to the greatest extent possible, given that if it was not granted, it would result in the loss of another existing good structure that's a carriage house that would be a future lot. In addition, all of these lots, as you've seen, based on the staff report, meet all of the R15 requirements. There are no requested variances from all of the R15 requirements in terms of their lot size. In fact, all of these lots greatly exceed, meet and greatly exceed the minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. They meet the lot widths and the setbacks. The only issue is that carriage house. There's a side setback of 10 feet, and the one corner hits it at 9 feet. So there is another requested variance to reduce that from 10 feet to 9 feet only. Looking around at North Cooper Lake and Austin, this section to the left of North Cooper Lake, which is on your right-hand side of the screen, is all R15. The lots within this neighborhood all are of the same size and nature as the ones that are being proposed, as per this plat, as you would expect with an R15 neighborhood. Mr. Welch has visited all of his neighbors and done that himself personally to inform them of this proposed request and his future requests, so that he can have five lots developed according to R15 standards with only those two variances being requested. I'm here to answer any questions. I do want to note, for the record, that Mr. Welch is not in chambers, given the, his position with the city, just so that that was aware, and you would know why he's not in chambers today because of his position. With that, I'm here to answer any questions and respectfully request your recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions for the applicant? No? Oh, go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Moore.
Good evening.
The accessory building, what is the square footage on that?
I don't have it. It wasn't provided.
It wasn't on the actual plan. It's a smaller structure, probably around 1,500 square feet, 1,200 to 1,500 square feet is what I would estimate. I don't have an exact square footage, though.
So it will be included into the homeowners association, HOA, with this and with equal rights, even though it's much smaller than the other buildings will be?
Yes, because it'll be one lot out of five, so that's correct. It'll be part of the five-lot subdivision, so to speak, that will have a homeowners association to be responsible. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
But it is the largest lot, because I think it's 26,000 square feet, so...
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. You don't have to raise your hand. Just come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please sign our sign-in sheet, and good evening and welcome.
Hi, my name is Kay Clapper. I live on 3927 Plumcrest Road. I'm in Ward 4, so I'm about a block away from this property. I have a couple of questions, but first I would like to get a poll from all of you. Under Georgia law 36-30-6, it is improper and illegal for a member of the municipal council to vote on any question brought before the council in which he has a personal financial interest. And government official is defined as not only the city council member, but also planning and zoning commission. If that official has a property interest in any real property affected by a zoning action, or has a financial interest in any business entity which has a property interest in any real property affected by the zoning action, or has a member of the family, and family is defined as spouse, mother, father, brother, sister, son, daughter, having an interest described in the subject property, shall immediately disclose the nature and extent of such interest in writing to the governing authority of the local government in which the official is a member. The local government official who has an interest shall disqualify himself from voting on the rezoning action, and shall not take any other action on behalf of himself or other person to influence action on the application for the zoning. I'm asking all of you, do you have any financial interest in this variance change in this property? Mr. Rice, I know you're, were you appointed by Mr. Welch to be on the zoning...
Ms. Clapper, hold on. Let me, let me stop you there. We can't be going through a Q and A. If you want to speak in favor of or opposition to this application, it's absolutely fine. By virtue of everybody sitting up here on this panel, they've already agreed to that they have no financial obligation or interest in this property.
That's fine.
Okay, they would recuse themselves prior to this meeting, had that been the case.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. I wanted it on the record.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm confused as to the zoning not changing from R15. If you build five houses on 2.4 acres, doesn't that change the zoning?
The, based on the presentation from city staff, the lots meet the R15 zoning. The proposed lots meet the R15 zoning. Rusty, would you like to expound on that?
Yes, the proposed lots range between 15,000 square feet and 26,000 square feet, so the density for the site is unchanged with the development of five lots.
Okay.
Of what's legally allowed based on the current zoning.
Okay. That's all I had.
But are you in favor of or in opposition to?
No, I am in opposition. There are, there are 100-year-old oak trees on that lot. I'm sure he's gonna clear-cut it, you know, and it's a beautiful lot. It's been there for 60 years, and, you know, this is happening all around us. They're slowly moving into my neighborhood. I mean, I'm, I just don't want to see five more houses with two cars each going into North Cooper Lake again. I mean, the density of our city is just, you know, getting too much. It's too much, so I'm against it.
Thank you, Ms. Clapper. Appreciate you coming out. Anyone else in attendance that'd like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application, please come forward now. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, Lucy Woolery. I'm at 820 Austin, and we're fairly new to the neighborhood, so we were not contacted. And so I'm not here for or against, just seeking clarification, if that's okay? The neighborhood is lovely, like she said. Our concern is on the safety, because coming in on this, I'm not sure which end it is. Anyway, coming onto Austin from North Cooper Lake at that location, there's a fairly significant change in elevation and a blinking light at the bottom there. And cars have changed a lot since this neighborhood first started. Many of them are plastic and can't take a hit like the cars when the neighborhood started. And we've noticed in our own families, different cars. If we're sitting up high, we feel like we have a pretty good shot at making a left turn onto Austin. But still, we're very wary, because even with that light, traffic can come up very quickly. When you're sitting in a lower car, like an average sedan, they're on you like a wildfire just all of a sudden. And so we're curious the extent to which that's been looked at in considering this. We're not, we're not saying yes or no, we're just concerned about the traffic. With four additional dwellings, that's not four additional cars, we're guessing. We're probably thinking more like eight to 12 cars, and the traffic there is concerning to us. So I don't know what to tell you as far as yes or no.
No worries. That's why we're here, to try to answer as many questions as we can before we make any decisions, okay? But we appreciate you coming out, appreciate your comments, and we'll do our best to get those answers for you, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Martin, is there...
We'll, we'll take your information and pass it along to the city engineer. That's an existing condition that's out there today that's not affected by the, by the development per se, as far as driveways pulling out in that location. So it's really not studied, but I'll be happy to send this information to the city engineer and see what comment he has regarding this issue, because it's just, we're discussing the left-hand turn from North Cooper Lake Road, southbound onto Austin Drive, is your concern, right?
I don't know what the protocol is here.
It's okay.
I don't have a super loud voice. That's one concern. The other concern is even for people coming up North Cooper Lake and the traffic coming out, that hopefully they'll be able to see in time. But since I have you, where would the ingress and egress be for those four additional dwellings to come out onto Austin?
Right now, since they don't have a house plan planned for them, I can't really speak to that. But the, I think the desire is to have the four lots come off of enter and exit off Austin Drive, and then the existing dwelling would maintain its existing driveway on North Cooper Lake.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah. Typically, we try to push those driveways away from the intersection of Austin Drive and North Cooper Lake. So at a minimum, I would think that first lot at the corner, that driveway would be nearest the shared property line between, is that, I can't tell the numbers, but that shared property line between the two new lots.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that'd like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application? All right. There's no further. We're going to close the public comment at this time. Any further discussion from the board for the applicant? All right. Then I'd like to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, 9-166, approval of subdivision plat for five lots with variances, 2.4 acres, land lot 384, 3813 North Cooper Lake Road. I'd make a motion to approve.
So you have a motion to approve, Mr. Rice. Do we have a second? We have Mr. Bartlett with a second. Please vote. All right, the application has been approved, 7-0.
I just want to clarify, this, the next meeting will be next Monday.
Okay.
Since this is a plat approval, it doesn't travel the same as a zoning request, so...
And I think we need to clear that up, because it is an official in the city. This is not a special deal for him to get to the next mayor and council meeting. Any application like this that doesn't require rezoning would have the same exact step. So the next meeting that this will be heard at mayor and council is next Monday?
Right.
Okay, and the date is?
May 20th.
May 20th. Okay, so that'll be the next opportunity to come out and learn more about this application. And as these applications go, just so you guys know, they're constantly getting more information, growing their plan, and they may have more answers for you at the next meeting, okay? All right, thanks for coming out. All right. The next item on our agenda is 2019-168. This is zoning request, Z19-010, rezoning from R20 to R15, conditional for the, for three single-family homes at a density of 2.93 units per acre. This is just over one acre, 1.0245 acres in land lot 466. This is 990 Pebblebrook Road. Palladium Land LLC is the applicant. Mr. Martin, in the background, please.
All right. 19-010, you guys will hear tonight, and then it'll go to P and Z on June 17th, normal zoning This property is located at 990 Pebblebrook. The city annexed this property in 2018. As part of that annexation, it was two single-family homes on R20 lots, which means it's single-family zoning with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. The property is located in Ward 7 on Pebblebrook Road, just south of the Vining's Estate entrance on that, on that side of the subdivision. The lot is currently wooded and vacant. There's no structure on site. The applicant is proposing to rezone the subject property from R20 to R15, conditional for the, for the development of three residential lots and residences. The city's future land use map calls this area as low-density residential, which means developments under three units per acre. At three lots, the density for this site is 2.93 units per acre. So it is under that threshold, so there is no future land use change associated with this request. The adjoining properties to the north, south, east, and west, to the north is low-density residential on the city's future land use map, and then the east and south and west is all located in unincorporated Cobb County, and it has a classification of low-density residential in Cobb County. This is the proposed site plan. You have three single-family homes that will be facing Pebblebrook Road, and they'll have individual driveways off Pebblebrook Road, and these homes are planned to have side-entry garages, so you'll come in and then enter the garage that's on the side of the house. And with this zoning, they're going to maintain the required R15 setbacks, which is, Pebblebrook Road is considered a minor thoroughfare, so it requires a 40-foot front setback, a 10-foot side, and a 30-foot rear. They're proposing a five-foot sidewalk that'll tie into the existing sidewalk to the, to the east from the new subdivision that's being built by David Weekly. And then this is going to be the approximate location of the stormwater detention facility. They provided additional maps to reflect that. However, our city engineer is requesting that those individual detention facilities be consolidated into one facility. With this request, they're requesting two variances. The first is to reduce the lot size from R, from 15,000 square feet to 14,620 square feet, and that's for Lot 3. And the second request is to reduce the driveway setback for the R15 zoning district from five feet down to one foot, and that's to allow them to have the side-entry garages. And that's to allow them to have the side-entry garages. This is just to give you an idea of the proposed elevations. So they're posing Borden-Batten on front and then Hardy on the, on sides. Hardy plank siding. And then lap siding on, on the sides as well. This is the subject property, as you can see, it, it is a wooded lot. And then these are the adjacent properties. The top left is the adjoining property to the west. Top right is Vining's Estate's entrance. The lower left is the view from the entrance back towards the new David Weekly development. And then the bottom right is the adjoining properties to the east from within the David Weekly development. I think it's called Vining's Brook subdivision. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning request to R twenty with following conditions, the standard conditions from section twelve oh one dealing with the composition of the homes, the requirement for an HOA, the requirement for stormwater management, the requirement for underground utilities, and then any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. And finally, or the next requirement is prohibition on bearing of debris on site and then tree ordinance and landscaping requirements for the site. Outside of those standard conditions, staff is proposing some special conditions. Eleven highlights the minimum building setbacks and we've already gone over those. Twelve calls the minimum lot size for lot three at fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty square feet. Number thirteen allows for the minimum driveway setback to be one foot. Number fourteen requires the developer meet all the, the access requirements for the, the fire marshal. And typically, those will be identified during the plan review process. Fifteen, developer shall be responsible for any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary during the review by Public Works Director or Cobb County Water System. Number sixteen, the developer shall be responsible for any stormwater improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Seventeen, the developer shall be responsible for any improvements to mitigate the sightline issues down Pebblebrook Road for egress and, and egra-, ingress and egress from the site. Eighteen is the requirement for the sidewalk along Pebblebrook Road. Nineteen is the requirement for the individual stormwater facility and be located on its own lot of record. And twenty ties the zoning of the property to the submitted site plan and twenty-one ties it to the building elevation submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Okay, thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about your plan, please. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Yeah, my name is Paul Marat, I'm with Palladium Land, the applicant. I think the city staff has summed, summed this up pretty well. There are a couple of things in the staff report that I had a couple of questions about. We feel as if it's an appropriate use. There's the surrounding area, it's, it's mostly surrounded by unincorporated Cobb County, but we feel as if this R fifteen zoning is appropriate considering the surrounding zoning. There were a couple of things, and Mr. Martin, you might be able to address this, in, in condition number eleven in your written. Okay, that was, that, that was totally, I was totally confused and I noticed in your presentation it wasn't part of it. The second part is the stormwater facility. And I think that goes to, Rob Anagnostus talked, before we drew these plans, because the, the existing plans now have individual stormwater facilities on each lot. And before we had those drawn by the engineer, Rob met with the city engineer to make sure we had this drawn the way it, it would be acceptable. So why don't you address that, Rob?
I'm Rob Anagnostus for the record. Yeah, I'd met with Kevin and we went over this beforehand because with the size of the property, it really doesn't, we wouldn't be able to meet the requirements if we had to have a separate lot for a stormwater detention. He said if our engineer could design a system that would contain it and we could show that, that he would accept that.
With individ-, and three individuals?
Yeah, with individuals. So that's what we did. Mark Lee is our engineer, we spent a lot of time on this. And that was one of the things that was very important to us to address beforehand if we was interested in doing this project. So I'm a little confused now why he's saying that we have to have a detention facility.
And, and Mr. Martin, in your, in your staff recommendation, you addressed previously the stormwater detention and basically the city engineer said he would like to have, he didn't say he had to have, have it in one, but the problem we have here is this isn't some big subdivision with a large spot for a, for a common detention facility.
We, we have two issues and there's ways to resolve these issues. The, the issue with having individual detention facilities is that the city is charged to be able to maintain our permitting for the city. We have to inspect and make sure that all detention facilities are operating and they're being maintained. When we have individual facilities on individual lots, the sheer number of facilities to inspect and maintain is, is astronomical, it's a lot of facilities that we got to deal with on a daily. So if we can shrink that, shrink those down to one facility that we can maintain for the site, it helps the ci-, city and doesn't require us to hire additional staff to be able to, to maintain all of these, go and inspect all these facilities. Also, when you have individual facilities, you know, people don't tend to maintain them or they go away and stuff like that happens. So when it's part of a cohesive community facility, you have everyone that has ownership in that and everyone has responsibility for it. So a lot of, it'll, it'll stay the way that it is and, and be maintained the way that it's supposed to be maintained if it's owned by multiple parties. The, I don't know what the nature of your conversation was with Kevin. I don't know how the question was asked, if it was, can we do three individual facilities on here? If that was the question, then he, he would say, yeah, if you can show that it meets stormwater management facilities. But if the question wasn't asked, what was, what would the city like to see? Then he may not have provided you an answer for that. So that's probably where we're at at this point. So I think we can, we can address the issues with respect to lot size and everything else. That, I don't think that's our concern. Our, our concern is making sure that we get the detention facility in a common ownership, so we have multiple people caring for it and that those costs of maintenance are spread out amongst the community. Typically, when we allow the individual units, it's on smaller lots where doing a hydrological study isn't appropriate. It's usually under three-quarters of an acre and it may be one or two lots. When you start getting over three-quarters of an acre, that's typically where the threshold is that it kicks in for those community facilities.
Okay, I, I don't really know how to address that, but I, I do have a question. One of the things you mentioned and one of our concerns, two is, one is a HOA, two is a, a detention facility. So is it, my understanding that if we decide to go with the detention facility, you're going to have consideration in the lot size and not have that count against us in our.
Right.
Because it's going to be very difficult to put this on a separate, quote, separate lot.
Well, I mean, we handle it two ways. It can be on a separate lot or the facility spans across all three lots. And each one of those, so we're not concentrating the facility on one lot and then the other two people say, we're not part of that anymore and we're not going to maintain that. And the poor guy at the facility that's taking care of everyone's stormwater is required to maintain everyone, maintain the facility.
Yes, sir. So, so if we could incorporate that into the, or around the sewer easement, would we create an easement for that or still a separate D lot?
We could do it either way and we're happy to work through that outside of this.
Okay.
Had we not thought we could come through to a resolution on this, we wouldn't have allowed it to move forward.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate that. We're just, we just got.
We, we think we can figure this out between now and mayor and council.
Okay, would that be the best way to move forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, we appreciate your clarification.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll meet with our engineer and then get back with you.
I'll be happy to set up that meeting with us.
Okay.
With the engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Questions from?
Anybody any questions for the applicant? All right, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Okay. Let the record reflect, there's no public comment. All right. Yeah, if you can ask a question, Mr. Monroe?
Rusty, if this was not going from R twenty to R fifteen, what would the stormwater requirements be?
They would still have to follow the same stormwater requirements because it's going to exceed, those requirements are, there's either a land subdivision or there's more than five thousand square feet of developed or redeveloped property or impervious surface area. So more, more or less, it probably would have kicked those requirements in.
Any other questions? I think we have to take it on its face value. On what, on what they're proposing, the application as it exists, and they're going to have to work through it before they get to mayor and council. Okay. All right, I would like. Good, good, all right. The, like to request a motion for this item, please. Item two zero one nine dash one six eight.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation for approval for zoning request, Z nineteen zero one nine, zero one zero, requesting from R twenty to R fifteen conditional with staff and city conditions and recommendations and with the understanding that staff and engineering will get with the applicant before mayor and council to resolve the stormwater detention.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? And this is a motion to approve, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a second, Ms. Harrington? Please vote. Okay. The application is approved, six one, with Mr. Seagraves in opposition. All right, guys, good luck with your project. All right, the next item on the agenda is two zero one nine dash one seven zero. This is zoning request Z one nine dash zero zero nine. Rezoning from light industrial to mixed use for the use of the property as residence in an antique restoration business. This is one point two two acres at landlot four ninety-two. It's twenty-two oh one Dixie Avenue. Gordon and Deanie Brands are the applicant.
This request is following the last request and, and its pattern. You guys will hear it tonight, it'll go to P and Z on August seventeenth. This property is twenty-two hundred Dixie Avenue. It's one point two two acres. It's got a zoning classification of light industrial. The APK is proposing to renovate or rebuild the existing residence out there and turn it officially back into a residence and then maintain their antique restoration business in the accessory buildings in the back. And I'll, I'll show you a site plan of what that all looks like. But that, but the request is basically to rezone from LI to mixed use to allow for the residential use on the property. I'll go back and, you can see the property on the map, it's LI. The surrounding properties on Dixie Avenue and Davis Drive and all that are in unincorporated Cobb County. They have a zoning classification of heavy industrial in the county. But the actual land uses around it are, they're, some industrial uses and then there's residential mixed within it, so it's a mixture of uses. Then the uses across Dixie Avenue, the CSX roadway and railroad and Atlanta Road, it's a small office slash retail center and then a, a apartment complex. Our future land use map calls this area industrial mixed use. That was a future land use designation that we added to the twenty forty comprehensive plan to allow for mixed residential industrial uses for, you know, artists and creator spaces and those type uses. So we, this area specifically north of, north IGO in, along, along Dixie Avenue, we've got it called as mixed industrial, industrial mixed use, I'm sorry. This is the existing survey of the property and the proposed site plan. This is the proposed residence, the, uh, the building is there. They're proposing to add on to it and renovate the exterior and everything else. They'll have to tell you exactly what those improvements will, will really be. The antique business is run out of the accessory building in the back. That is existing today, they're, they're doing all their work and everything back there. There's an existing gravel area that is, is on the site, so that's how people access the, the restoration business in the back. There's an entrance off of Dixie Avenue and then one off of Davis Road. And the site right now is currently fenced around the perimeter. With this rezoning, the minimum setbacks are going to change. For the mixed-use zoning district, the, the standard setbacks are front of zero, side of zero and a rear of twenty. And with this request, they're requesting two variances. The first is to replace the existing chain-link fence with a new six-foot wooden fence with brick slash stone columns. That variance is necessary because the, the fence is between the house and the street and typically fences in the front yard require a maximum height of four feet. So they're requesting to increase that height up to six feet. And then the second variance is to maintain use of the gravel area for their parking area. This is the proposed building elevations for the single-family home and what, what they intended to look like. Here's the pictures of the subject property. The top two are from Dixie Avenue. The bottom one is from Davis, looking back into the site. And then these are the surrounding uses. Community Development recommends approval of the request and with the standard conditions from section twelve oh one, dealing with underground utilities, traffic improvements, bearing of debris and then tree ordinance. Uh, and then we added special conditions. Number seven deals with the building setback. Eight deals with fire access to the site. Nine is water and sewer improvements are the responsible, responsibility of the, of the developer. And ten is a right-of-way dedication along both Dixie and Davis because they're, those right-of-ways are below the minimum standards. And 10 is a right-of-way dedication along both Dixie and Davis, because those right-of-ways are below the minimum standards. Eleven is the approval for the gravel for the parking area. And 12 is the allowance for the six-foot fence along the perimeter and the front yard. Thirteen ties the approval to the site plan, and 14 ties the approval to the elevations. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? All right, thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward. Tell us a little bit about your plan. Mr. and Ms. Brands, good evening and welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your time this evening. Questions?
I just have one question on the fence. It says iron and wood. I was thinking it was a wood fence. Can you tell me?
It's going to be a mixture. There's going to be a certain point along Dixie Avenue from the far south property line to a certain distance past the current structure. It's going to have a antique iron fence that's about 150 years old that we want to incorporate into some stone columns, because it ties in with the elevation of the house and the period of the house. And then we'll pick up from there with a two-by-two decorative fence out to the Davis entrance.
Oh, it's a decorative-type iron?
Right.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions?
Turns about the structure. We want to...
Why don't you tell us a little bit about your plan, Mr. Brands? You just kind of asked, you opened it up to questions. You failed to, like, give us any details of what you're planning to do.
The house is built, you know, mid-1800s. We're going to try to preserve it, rebuild it. Got into it. It needs to be dismantled. We want to keep the masonry structures that are there and rebuild up to it, keeping the same type of elevations, the same components, doing a Cypress siding, reuse some of the columns that are there now. You know, reuse existing interior components. It's got beadboard that was installed in 1890. We'll find signatures on the wall from 1906 that are written on top of it, which we want to preserve that. The mantles are made out of a salvaged granite stone inside. We want to reuse those hearts that are there on two of the fireplaces. But the fireplace will not be operable. They're going to be sealed off for more just for show and looks. But we're using some of the interior beams that are hand-tuned from mantel pieces and maybe faux beams in the ceilings. We originally had an engineer look at it, and based off his engineered foundation repairs, it was to exceed, you know, what could be done to the house. It wasn't cost-effective to jack the house up, pour walls underneath it and bring the house down, because all the bottom plates were eight-by-eight beams that are... Some have termite damage and some are just beyond repair. So we want to dismantle it, repeat the exact same structure, the exact same footprint, with some additions to the rear within the setbacks. As far as, you know, the fencing, we discussed that. The elevation materials, same footprint on the front. Primary entrances on Davis Road, keeping all the trees that are there.
Why the mixture of residential and commercial? What's the intent of taking this back to a residential structure?
So it could be used as a rental property for us and possibly move into down the line. Our son is graduating. He shows interest, some of his friends, to rent it from us. And then down the line, possibly...
You're going to build a frat house?
No, no, I didn't say that. Say that, it's not an animal house, okay?
Sorry.
They're college graduates, and they've been through that stage. So they're matured, and they're beyond that. So, I mean, they're coming out of college, and they want a substantial... You know, they want to be able to go out and... Yeah, and start their career. And they want to be able to have a facility that's not going to be just an apartment complex or a little rental house or something. So, and then down the line, something that we may consider moving into down the line. They'll approve the area. There's already residential homes on the south side and the north side that are occupied residential. Everybody in the perimeter has signed an agreement with the rezoning.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Brands before he talks his way out of this? I'm sorry, I have a little bit of a history with the applicant, so forgive me for taking liberties with that.
He's my father.
And Mr. Brands won, okay. All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Please come forward now. Okay. Let the record reflect, there's no public comment on this application. All right, any further discussion? All right. I'd like to entertain a motion.
To make a motion that we approve zoning request Z-19-009, rezoning from LI to MU for the use of the property as residence in an antique restoration business. One dash two-two acres, landlot 492, 2201 Dixie Avenue, Gordon and Deanie Brands.
So we have a motion to approve, Mr. Bai. We have a second, Ms. Lightfoot. Please vote. The application is approved, 7-0. Good luck with your project. Oh, good times, all right. The last item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from the April 8, 2019, Planning and Zoning Meeting. Do we have any changes that need to be made at this time? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Motion to approve, Mr. Monroe? Second, Mr. Seagraves? Please vote to approve the minutes. Minutes are approved, 7-0. Now, before we cut off the meeting tonight, we had some celebratory slash disturbing news that was dropped on us right before we came down here that our very young, long-term director of Planning and Development is going to be retiring here shortly, and this will be his last meeting with us. And I've had the pleasure of spending many Monday nights over the last decade under his tutelage. And it's been an honor, and I appreciate everything Ken has done for the city of Smyrna during your time here. Not just as Planning Director, but as just being a good friend of the city. I appreciate you, Ken. Luck, Ken.
Thank you all. Just for the record, been here a little over 12 years. And I have been in the planning business for 42 years. So this is the right year and the right month to do it. I have totally enjoyed my 12 years in Smyrna. Totally enjoyed working with the Planning Commission. Joel, I will say similar things back to you. I appreciate what you've done as the chairman. I think you run a really good meeting. You understand the issues. I appreciate your trust and confidence, not only in me, but in the staff. And it has been a pleasure to work for the city. But the time comes in everybody's life when opportunities and family and other issues come together, and you have to make a decision. And that's indeed what has happened. It's all positive from my standpoint. And there are some things occurring in June that I've decided I want to be part of. So it's time to leave, to retire, and to move on. I am proud of the staff that we have, and I think... And I have no doubt, actually, that I leave the Planning Commission and the city in very capable hands of that. So that's another reason. It's time to go, get out when you can on that. So thank you, guys, for all the trust and confidence you've given me in the years. And I've enjoyed being here. Thank you.
We appreciate you, Ken, for sure. Any other comments? Okay. All right, this meeting is adjourned at 7:01 in the PM. Best part?